Good evening, everybody. We'd like to bring to order our City of Nelson Council meeting, March the 3rd, 2025. Let's have a moment of prayer before we get started. Father God, thank you for today. Lord, we ask that you be with us, that you would lead, guide, and protect us, Father God. Help us make the best decisions for the city, Lord. I ask that you would be with our firemen, our servicemen, our EMTs, our police officers. Father God, is there out working? We ask that you would keep up safety, keep them protected, Lord. We ask these things of you, and we pray. Do you do this celebration now?
Good Lord, it is the fire of the United States of America. It is the freedom of the righteous man, one nation, and we are being invisible. We will repeat it in just a short while.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Make sure they're all good approved.
Nathan, the second?
Second.
William, all of them? Thank you, unanimous. All right. Next up is public appearance. If there are any, if anybody in the public that has anything pertaining to the agenda for this evening that they'd like to speak on. Okay. Number one to number six. Approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve our February the 10th, 2025 minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. This is going to be Neil and Amy first, Chris and Hannah second, all of them. Getting a motion to approve our February the 25th, 2025 work session.
Seven.
William, turn it up in a second. Chris and Neil, all of them. Thank you. Okay. Next up is department number four. I'm assuming you don't have anything tonight for Cherokee County, or do you?
I mean, I have some things.
Please, come ahead. What was your name again? I didn't hear.
Sergeant Hayes.
Sergeant Hayes?
Daniel Hayes. I'm the shift commander, shift three, which is the shift that works today and tomorrow on that rotation.
Okay.
So.
Can I start here?
I know you guys probably want some major stuff, but just not anything major that really happens up here. Just some calls my shift handled this month that I can recall. One that you guys might be interested in, we had a suspicious person at the park on School Street there. Some families were at the park with their children, and they called in that a gentleman had entered the bathroom. We had been there for like two hours. So we went out, he was still in the bathroom when we got there. His name was Jarvis Mayo. He said some of y'all would be familiar with him. You don't recognize the name. I think he went by Dion.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I think specifically he said he would.
That is not his name.
Okay. He was, it was odd, but he seemed okay.
And he does it here all the time.
Yeah. He said he was up here helping somebody clean out a car, and he had a pile of change in the sink cleaning it, and he had music going on his phone, listening to it, and he was cordial with us. We made sure he didn't have any marks or anything, and told him about to hang out in the locker bathroom for two hours. That was kind of odd. We did respond to a domestic dispute just a few days ago in Laurel Cove. Nothing to it, nobody went to jail. I encountered, I don't recall the day, it was the middle of the month, some loose pit bulls right here on Kennesaw Avenue. They were running from School Street, the playground area. I actually followed them all the way down. They took me down Blue Ridge Avenue where Blue Ridge dead ends into Highway 5. And that house right there on the left, they kind of hung out there. So I was able to get ahold of one of them, call the number of the tag. The guy lived about five minutes away. He just said it was a nice day, he left them out, went and rode his motorcycle, and they jumped. Like, they jumped. I put them back in the fence, and they would jump it right in front of me, over and over and over. The neighbors across the street did say animal control had been called multiple times. He's just inside of Pickens, so I don't know what Dylan's.
Is he on the top of Cherokee Avenue?
No, it was from Blue Ridge right into, like, his house backs up to Highway 5 right there in the corner. But the houses across the street that are kind of up on the hill across from the neighborhood came out, because she saw me standing with the dogs, and said they get out all the time. But they're pit bulls, they're very nice, but they're pit bulls, so it's kind of alarming when you see them. Nobody at the playground that day was like yelling at me when I drove by. I just literally got behind them and followed them, because they wouldn't stop for me, they went right to the house. So I told him, that's one thing to hit, because they're right there on Highway 5 and all the streets, but two, it's alarming. So he said he was actively working on that with the weather getting nicer, to make sure they can, because they just jump right over his little little fence.
The defense is great.
Yeah. I have one for my dogs lately. It only takes once in a while, so they don't do it again. You know, otherwise, I know my shift, I'm in here every day, but we try to patrol, and it's always not going to look nice and quiet. You know, the weather getting nicer, probably get a little busier with the ball field and the parks and stuff, but it's all right.
We had a suspicious vehicle twice this week. Well, Friday, and then again today. A dark sedan in Laurel Lake, and I saw it today. So riding really slow by houses and stopped in front of mine today, and I just watched. They got, literally two guys got out and was looking around and then changed seats and got back in the car and drove up. But it's just a dark black sedan.
Okay.
I don't know the name or make or model, so.
Tell the residents if they see it.
I did.
They get a tag number, call us. We try to stay, there's only three of us on my shift right now. My foreman got transferred to train. We try to keep forward through a shift up here. But I was up here today, I noticed all the tree work and the, you know, the tree guys and stuff, and I was in Laurel Lake. I didn't notice it, it was earlier this morning when I was up here. But yeah, tell them to feel free to call us. At minimum, if they get a tag number, we can run the tag number, see if they belong to the area, if, yeah.
I gotta commentate about the tree people saying that they were taking an apple or something.
They probably, yeah.
Grassy area or the ball field, was that not like a?
Right. Yeah, I think they probably think they're city in purpose, but they're, I think they're stateable.
Yeah, they're a little bit. If you know what time that car was at, we can check a lot of cameras too. And it's in the tag room. I kept thinking, like, later, just for my. Yeah, just to remind me, and I'll do it too, because I don't know what it was.
But I try to let everybody know, even like, you know, people might sit in the corner like, oh, it's not a big deal. We will prioritize calls, so if we have an emergency call, we'll come, try to find suspicious people later, right?
Yeah.
So if people are scared, especially the older people in the community, like, I don't want to bother law enforcement.
Yeah.
At minimum, if they call, it's going to put a timestamp on it. This call is in this area.
Is it a 911 call, or is it going to be?
There's a non-emergency number, but same people answer the non-emergency phone that answered the emergency, so it's easier just to remember 911. Dispatch does the same thing. If you call in, pick up and say, hey, there's a loose stall, we're going to say, hold on a minute, let me answer this other person down or whatever call it is. So I'll tell people that, we do triage for calls. They're not taking away from an emergency, we're going to go to the emergency first and then come handle it.
Okay.
You know, we prioritize them in that matter, so.
Appreciate it, thank you, Lord.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Mayor's Board. I just want to say I'm extremely excited, because we have had an outpouring of donations for our Easter event. And.
Literally.
Literally, it is going to be, it's going to be amazing. So I think just this week, we've had donations of about $2,000 plus.
Pam's very lucky.
She is, and that's not including the Chick-fil-A gift card, the Chick-fil-A donated, or the theater tickets that have been donated, or Evan's donation, it doesn't include that. So it's just, it's just amazing to see people, you know, hey, it's time, and we make a phone call, and they're just like, yeah, we want to be a part of it, so. For you guys out there in the audience tonight, you can follow along with us. We're going to talk a little bit about our master park plan. We had a work session earlier this month, or early, right near last month, but we're going to, we're going to do some discussion on it. These are the two options here. We've got option A and B, and we're going to, we're just going, council's going to have some dialogue, so, and go through some of this stuff, so we can make some decisions. And then after everything is made, we have to get drawings, and we're going to have a town hall, another one, to go through the drawings, and hopefully we'll have a start date, a good start, you know, a tentative start date, so, once we have our drawings. So we are pushing this round along and everything, so. Go ahead and look at option one. Everybody has that on, and then, so, William, correct me if I'm wrong, but the change was between option one and option two is basically the basketball court is facing north and south in option one, and it's east and west in option two, and north and south just prevents the sun and beautiful space. So it does take away the parking areas that we had, but it all, then it goes back in and adds a.
Looks like a gravel.
Yeah, it's like a gravel top. I don't know what that is. Sidewalk, some stuff will connect, but anyway, that's the main change on here. Everything else pretty much stayed the same. And as she was going through it, she went through, she flipped on over to like the Ford page or the dent page. Just a couple others, sorry. She goes and she talks about some of the fencing for like the, it's the community garden fencing. What kind of fencing do we want there? Do we want any fencing? The one, where we're at now, we don't have fencing. So is that something that can be added later, or you guys want to see fencing? And I'll defer to Christine, William, you guys are all on that committee. You're not, you're not doing the garden anymore?
I'm just not on the committee.
Christine and Sean, who's on there? They need a mouse.
I'm going to tell her what it is, that way you can tell us.
So do you guys want to see fencing around it, or?
I think fencing would be nice to deter the issues of that kind, but I don't think it's necess, like, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, it would, it would let you know for sure that this is a private space where people, you know, like, that's not just free for all. But.
Did you remember someplace on the road?
Yeah, but we can do that with, I mean, that's something that we can do later, you know.
Yeah, we were telling you, or we could actually, we could actually call, maybe we wanted it to match, we could have called the fencing company that did the small park.
Yeah, it's not.
But I think the one should do it to match.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
So fencing will add later?
Yeah, I think all of fencing, every version.
Yeah. And then the other thing, so I'm going to think of, I'm going to, here's some fencing here. We did look at the garden bed boxes, and I think when we talked about those, we decided we would only do maybe two or three of those, and then.
And so. And that's not a big deal, I mean, I can build that, but that's a huge deal.
Okay, so fencing later, and then the boxes, what's the way it is for? Yeah, we've got enough, I think there's enough funds in there, and that, I think that we could build the boxes up.
Right.
We need to figure out, if you want to charge the same thing for one box, as you would.
Right.
Play it out and see how big.
Yeah.
Your flats, your squares may be smaller up to that.
Right.
Probably just have it graded and prepped.
Graded and prepped.
Then the committee could get together with members and decide, do you want it laid out, if you want a few boxes for anybody who wants a box.
Yeah, just like, right, you're right, you charge for a box, or not, or you want a plot, or a box, or you want both, or, yeah.
Speaking of working in the garden, if you'll get with me, I've got a tractor and this too. This is, if you don't get with me, we do it, okay. Next thing that we were looking at is, there's a nice picture of the boxes that they had kind of with, that they had some before. The next up would be the acrylic, or, how do you say that word, Crytek?
Did acrylic work?
Yeah. Sports surfacing for pickleball and basketball. This is for the painting only of the game pad, so do you guys have a preference of the game pad? The only thing I see on here is Willy Green, and she got the colors from our park on the School Street there.
They were saying that they would only do painting on the game pad, because then you could change it later if you wanted to do four square. This stuff's for the pickleball and the basketball.
So are you good with the color scheme, I guess is what they're asking.
I'll take care of it.
What color, you want some, ask her for some options, color options?
Yeah, I mean, that's later selection. Anyways, just deciding if you want to spend the money for it to begin with.
Yeah.
For the paint, or for the?
Yeah.
Dish?
Okay.
That's for the?
The treating for the.
Well, they have to paint something on there, but it just depends, because we're doing, we, the other option was whether we wanted to do asphalt, or we wanted to do concrete, and based on what I see down there now, the concrete has held up a whole lot longer than that asphalt. I mean, that asphalt's just because of.
The other day, I talked to, talked to a bunch of pickleball people, and we were in Cartersville at that giant complex. They have 10 tennis courts, and they have 10 pickleball courts. They're fairly new, and I don't know how many soccer fields in baseball there is, it's incredible. But they have asphalt courts, and I talked to Wendy Lauer about it, who's the pickleball She said asphalt can be fine if it's done correctly the first time, but if it's not, it's really bad, and it cracks really bad.
I think our issue was.
And they need to be resurfaced a lot more often, so she said, if you can do the concrete to begin with, she said, I think it's more money to start, but maintenance-wise, it's way better long-term, that it'll last longer, and they won't, they won't, because asphalt does what asphalt does, it stands and contracts and is going weak, so. That was, the general consensus was that concrete was better.
Well, I think the reason that we were in, we were looking at concrete too, is when it came up, we were talking to Michael Kidd, and we have a lot of wet ground. There, not only the stream, but we also have springs all over the place. So we do know that the concrete, that the old building was sitting on down there, that concrete's good, I mean, and it's, it's held up. Yeah, so, yes, so, having heard that, is there reference, you guys?
Did she give us the prices yet, or?
She's not, she's already at pricing, this is based on that.
I think that concrete, she said it was roughly like $20,000 a yard, whereas the asphalt, I would say it was like $5,000, $700, maybe, and it could be way off.
It was on that email.
Yeah, I guess it was.
But you're, you're still going to have maintenance on that.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, it's like, even if you come in, you have a lower price initially, you'll be resurfacing.
And we're also not talking about 10 tennis courts and 10 pickleball courts.
Yeah.
We're talking about 20 pickleball courts and 10 basketball courts, so it's not, you know. There's not that much.
Yeah, and have basketball, you have, we're going to do it at the same time, so the basketball as well. So we're going to get options for color schemes, and then.
Well, if you go with the concrete, or you're going to go with the, do you want to go with the acrylic? I think that would help protect the asphalt. Only thing I'm worried about concrete is, like she said in her email, it's not as forgiving when you fall on it. It's, it's rough on the body, concrete is, so.
I don't know. I think when it gets closer to it, we can get estimates, because a lot of those estimates that they get are kind of completely out of.
I couldn't ask for a get estimates on both, but I mean, like you said, I think the biggest issue that we're going to have with asphalt is going to be like what's down there now.
I'm pretty sure what's down there now wouldn't put in, right?
It could, and that could be.
That's a pretty big difference, too.
Yeah, it's like the intersection.
Well, if it goes like this, it's pretty much not put in.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell the other day that those courts were asphalt until she told me they were asphalt. I thought they were.
That might make them feel different.
Yeah. They had, you could see it on the edge, once she showed me, you could see, you know, asphalt kind of goes down and kind of.
Was there, was there, was there something around it? Was there a containment border or anything there?
No, they were, I mean, they were all fenced, obviously, with, you know, each court, but I, I would, I did not know that they were asphalt until she said, look at the edge, you can see the little bumpies, you know how asphalt looks like, junky. And then they had also asphalt around the light poles too, and I didn't notice until she told me, but she said if it's done right, it's really nice, but it's the resurfacing issue.
Well, the ones you were on were asphalt.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you said they were concrete with this stuff.
No, they were asphalt with the.
The asphalt's done right.
Yeah, that's what I said, right, but.
Resurfacing honestly is, how many buckets would it take, Nathan, to go back over a basketball court? I mean, it's literally re-rolling it, but the trick, I'm using the word acrylic too, because.
Yeah, but whatever.
Crytek, whatever.
Yeah, if that's like a, kind of like a sealant.
Exactly.
And so when you have to resurface it, you have to, you're going to have to reapply that, correct?
I would say so.
I think so.
Yeah.
So that's, I guess that's another question is, for whoever the tennis court people are, or pickleball court or whoever, maintenance-wise, you know, how much does it cost to resurface? What is the, and how often do you think you're supposed to do it, as opposed to?
Does the.
I guess concrete, I mean, I still think you would have to redo the.
If you do concrete wrong, it's going to have more cracks in it faster than asphalt.
Yeah.
There's two different kinds of concrete, concrete that's cracked and concrete that's going to crack. That'd be the question to ask, is, does this treatment extend the life of the asphalt
Thought we abandoned this half-court, just, just to focus on the center and seed.
How we want it, then they can do it, they can do the ball field at the center, they can do all three at the same time. What we did was, is the half-assed off court, we're going to put the court in, but we're not going to do landscaping there, we're just going to start out with our, we're doing our, the amenities first on that, except for phase one, and we'll do the, we'll do
Would it make more sense if we cut that out, since we bought these extra lots down here to extend this park area?
We cut that out.
The half-court and focus on the center, the seed center, like we talked about.
I mean, we're still focusing on it, we're just doing the, we're just doing the half-assed off court for Pickens Street, because we already have it, can't abandon the park, it's still there, and we had agreed that we would do that for the, for the kids that are out there, that they can't walk down here, or it's not safe to walk down here. So we did say that we were not going to pave anything, and we're not going to landscape it right now.
I don't know if you can call that a park.
I like it.
Be whatever.
That's what I like, I like it. There's also the issue that we've already spent some cost, cost funds on it, so there's All right, so we made sure I'm having this up here, so maintenance, costs for resurfacing, the treatment extend the life of the asphalt. Anything else? Options for color schemes, or color scheme options.
Can it just be green, this? Do it have to be white?
I'd probably, I don't think, especially with basketball.
I'm going to, I guess I pay attention to the other person's, you know.
I'm saying that blue color a lot, I said.
Yeah, this is, I see this a lot, like, the other day, all the people on court were in this blue.
Was that the bright one?
Yes.
That stain doesn't bother me as bad as this one.
Yeah, this is a lot.
The green base is better, it actually bothered me to me.
Let me see if we can get some color scheme options for that.
I'm sure I can, I can have anything we might come up with.
And I know that can probably get closer too, but at least we'll have something. And like again, I think she just went off the picnic tables, benches, and the trash receptacles, and tried to match something from there, which, not a big deal. Then the other thing that was on here was the size of the, this, yeah, I don't know what she's got. So do we want to go with something like this, or we want to go back with something that's wood and looks nice, and we do it ourselves?
I just assumed that the middle one's been doing it, you know, personally.
There's, well, there's just sizes, so there's a 16 by 28.
Two sides, no, they're just a, you know, it's, it's going to be right, it comes out out.
Yeah. And then so 20 by 40, and a 16 by 28. So what size, what size are we thinking?
If they were down there, she had a 25 by 35 drawn in, she didn't size the one on the game board, so you just need to be sized to fit the existing slab, since that's what it's going to be on.
That one's here and here, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that one doesn't, you can say how big that slab is still.
Yeah, that one's with the size that to fit the existing slab. The other one, they're going to downsize the old tennis court, I guess, basketball courts, you got to be saying tennis now. It goes away, so they'll probably get a new one, so they just picked a standard size for it.
Yeah, and then this little, this little one here was just more like a cover for people to sit under watching the pickleball. That's what that was.
Yeah, and we're sure people will gather.
And it looks like this bigger one is the asphalt structure down there, they'll go in and redo the asphalt structure? This is where the old basketball court is. It says.
Existing.
It says existing asphalt paving.
Well, I think it's kind of a difference, and like, you can see a dotted line around it.
Yeah, it's a lot smaller.
So it's like, we use a. Initial of the trial.
25 or 40 dot, just want to show you here. So that's on the asphalt area, and then this, this one here, this smaller one is where the, where that concrete pad is at now.
It feels like it'd be fitted to the pad, where they, where they put the pad on the side of the standard building.
Exactly.
It's probably a standard.
And I know that we, that 25 by 35 is something that we've talked about prior to us, actually being able to revamp the maintenance on for community center. So do we still want to go with something this big, or do we want to cut that down a little bit?
I'll see what they've got there ready to go.
Yeah, it looks like they're using the existing paving, they got this cut down, existing asphalt paving, and they get the building. So then you wouldn't have any, it's just concrete and asphalt, or just cut it down and use it with the middle one.
And it looks like there's color schemes to those too, there's the brown and tan, and then there's a gray and tan as well. I'm sure it also, I haven't seen any of that, how much you weigh, have you seen these anywhere in Cherokee?
Seems like I have.
Are they holding up?
Yeah, they'll last for years. I've seen a lot more bowed and twisted woods come off of the billions than I have.
Yeah. And then I think we talked about putting our own, doing our, getting our own picnic tables, ordering our own picnic tables and receptacles. Any other questions about the matter at work?
We needed a design on the bridge. I think keep it accessible as opposed to having stairs.
Definitely for strollers and walkers and whatever else, if the whole other thing, if the rest of it's accessible, and then you can't get over the bridge, that's kind of like, not nice.
So we wanna keep the, we wanna keep the bridge?
They do, or can you have it accessible?
They have option A, the bridge.
Yeah, instead of ramp or stairs.
The accessible bridge.
Oh, accessible.
Yeah, and you have to make it longer and rinky.
Okay, accessible bridge, okay.
I'm just wondering what you were just talking about, where they extend it out, some boardwalks, to make the transition as opposed to having stairs on each end.
Hmm, okay. Anything else?
Seems like the only thing we're up front really decided on is asphalt or concrete.
Yeah, and I'll get, I'll call, um, I'll call tomorrow and just get cost for resurfacing, um, and does the treatment extend the life of the asphalt and some color scheme options? And I'll send those out, yeah.
I'm pretty sure we probably don't have to pick a color right now, it'd be more likely than anything.
So is it safe to say that you, you would, you know, would like the asphalt if it's, if it's feasible as far as?
I'm more of a proponent of the asphalt, just because I know it's gonna be when you fall on it. I mean.
Um, the cost, you know, so we know a better, have a good idea for maintenance, and we can add it into our SPOs projects, you know, down the road, we can keep it added in there, and then, um, also, um, I'll ask about this, um. The crytec treatment and see if it extends the life, just for vehicles. And then we'll talk about color schemes, um, later. We'll decide later, I'll ask her to get us some.
Is there any other questions?
I think so.
If you think of anything else, just, um.
Yeah, the only thing that's in here was the bridge picture, but then she sent that, right?
Yeah, she sent a picture of a bridge, stairs on each end.
Yeah.
And then the other ones, they extend the slopes out and use boardwalk to make it, the transition to the bridge, to keep it accessible.
Any other discussion? Good? Yeah, and option A? I'll get with, um, I'll get with redesign this week. And get this over to them, and get our questions answered, and then we can go.
We're gonna start with the gravel parking, right?
Yeah, it looks like it, yeah, that's what was there.
Well, I think that was one of the choices, decided to go with it, concrete.
Oh, I thought she had.
She had, she, she had any kind of pass, right? And then the rest was gravel.
That's why it's shown, I think she said.
I thought that was gravel too. I think we did a concrete driveway apron, but this is the, um, this is gravel.
Yeah, I'm fine with it being the way it is, I was just thinking we were, she wanted us to tell her for sure which way.
Okay, do we want gravel, or we won't? What's up, y'all? Or do you want asphalt?
I'm fine with the gravel.
Okay, Nick, that didn't?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, it's. It would look better if it was asphalt, concrete. It'd be better.
Yeah, probably would, it probably would last longer, you know, if they're doing asphalt.
Yeah, that's one thing about if you're gonna do the tennis courts, asphalt, you may want to go. I said I'm fine with it either way.
Chrissy?
Yeah, either way, I mean, if you're gonna do it.
I mean, if we're already gonna have asphalt trucks out there, and you're gonna do it later on anyway, you may as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so we want asphalt, um, parking. And we're gonna do the, this here, we're just gonna do the, um, the asphalt pull-up here for the community garden, and then these parking spaces down here will be asphalt as well. Any other discussion?
We need to make sure that it's, well, that, that stuff, please have the phase one going. Don't let it, I mean, probably. It shouldn't be popping one up there, you know, one of them wants a. They just have to be able to access it, they need to get in there, if someone has a big man.
Um, check ends, property lines. So ba- basically, it's not property line, it's the pipe that goes through that property, right?
Yeah, but there's a big manhole cover there. And it could be, it's, no, I'm thinking that there shouldn't be property line. I don't know, it's on, but it's trying to be a screen, sure. Okay, and they have, yeah, but, well, I just wanna make sure they're, yeah, it's on, give them a go. Those are good things, so, hey, no, okay, any, anything else? All righty, we'll move on, Miranda.
We should be into construction drawings now, right?
What now? This should be construction, yeah.
These decisions should finally get.
Yeah, I said thirty percent, but I meant seventy, they just needed these in order to finish, so they're seventy percent complete. Sorry about that. Um, and then next up would be Miranda's finance report, and she is out. She put the information in there, Kelsey, you wanna read, just read through those?
The bank balances? Cashier fund, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-nine. Uh, Cherokee SPOs four, one hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-nine. Uh, Cherokee SPOs five, one million, eighty-six thousand, one hundred forty-four. General fund, one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine. Grant fund, sixty-seven thousand, nine thirty-eight. Pickens SPOs twenty-twenty, one million, ten hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-five. And this was like, as of rush, Thursday.
Yeah, last day of stuff there. All righty, next up is unfinished business, the tree ordinance revisions. You have those, Jen?
Yeah, they're in here, and I've got the copy, he said they're gonna strike through, and the kind of one.
Yeah.
If everything's amended as is.
All right.
So this would be the first reading of this, and then in April, we'll need to have a public hearing and. We just looked through some down and make sure it came out the way you'd want it to.
Does anybody wanna take a minute to, to review that?
The revise, we've had an opportunity to review the revise, but the revisements are behind the strike through. Just to see if we got them.
Take it out and see anything, we can adjust it for April.
Yeah, I like that, Kelsey. So she left it in here with the, with the strike through, through it, and they just put, um, and then put the verbiage underneath it.
What's wrong with that?
I saved it.
Nice.
If you go to save it, make a mark on it, because if you don't do anything to it, it won't give you the option to save it.
Right, right. That happened to be earlier, because I was, it wouldn't give me the.
Take the little mark, was it an option?
It wouldn't give me the, the option, it just, I'd just be closed.
Sorry. So Jeff, we need to go over and then talk about what we've, what we've struck here, or?
Or maybe you want to.
Um, do you guys wanna do that? We've already spoke about it once, this is just the revision typed up behind it, and then, um, the legal hasn't been ran, we'll re, we'll do it at a second reading. Anybody in the audience wanna copy this, you're welcome to, to grab them.
Just step back there.
Yeah. Any questions or concerns regarding the tree ordinance changes? Reditions?
No, I think, Chris, you can read it. So, 8B is not on here, because we were still, there is stuff that we need to be adding, we discussed in executive session, or.
We got an executive session tonight, it's not, yeah.
We'll go to nine, um, to nine, new business, Pickens County Emergency Operations Plan. Okay, so the whole booklet that was sent with this is not in here, this is just a signature page, but it's just the revisions that come up every few days, because this was like, I don't know, it was like two hundred pages or something, I think, I'm reading. Anyway, it's just a, a renewal, but we just did the same thing with Cherokee recently. So this is the one that's on the Pickens side. That's the, this is what we will need to have signed and sent back in, and then I have the completed, like a complete printout of the other one, and they're on the cover.
Do you want, I was just saying, do you want the towels, or do you want?
You can, you can drag it out, we'll see. We don't forget. Here we test, wasn't easy. Okay, we don't have to. Oh, we need to, okay. And I got a motion to approve the Pickens County Emergency Operations Plan, renewed. This was set to Jeff, too, yeah.
I did not read every one of the two hundred pages.
Thank you.
I did a flip through.
Yeah.
It looks good to me.
William Taylor, we have second, Chrissy McNeil, Al Baker. Goodness, thank you, okay. MOU Cherokee County Tennis Assessor's Office regarding House Bill five eighty-one.
Here, this one, we do. So we had an email from Steve Swindell, apparently some of the verbiage in eight two five eighty-one can be a little confusing, because they don't specify, because I think they're wanting a miller rate prior to leaving, or keeping the digest which isn't possible, so they want to have an amendment even placed to be able to default to last year's miller rate on the stuff that's sent out to public prior to being voted on. So it just makes it so that they can, um, send out the estimations of profit tax, it'll, it's how they've always done it, but because eight two five eighty-one's changing stuff, they need a paperwork signed. Please tell me if I'm messing you up.
No, I think that's true.
It appeared to be accepted ultimately, yeah, it seemed like it was just violent laws.
Yeah. That would be in the bill.
They extended out as an estimate, but then once the actual miller rate's set, it would adjust. So what they send out early is just an estimate, and then once the actual miller rate is set, it would adjust.
It can, and that's what they've always done, like you'd get it, and it would be the miller rate from last year, and then, because you can't vote to set the contract till you get your digests, and these go out prior to, and get that happening, so. It just allows them to continue doing their job, is my understanding, it doesn't.
That's enough. You get a motion to approve the MOU Cherokee County Tennis Assessor's Office regarding House Bill five eighty-one. Read the motion. Chrissy McNeil, in a second.
Second.
William Taylor, Al Baker. Goodness, thank you. Telecom units can go permanent.
When you asked, did you think of this one?
Yeah, I.
I thought we were talking about something else, so.
I did it.
We'll have to have two readings of this anyway, so I will conform it to the ordinance. To put it back on for April, and then run it on in April.
Okay, I just took all the stuff, so it says that you know, since that's a blink.
Send me what you, send me what you did.
But basically, we just don't have anything in place currently for right-of-way stuff to keep up with it. This has just come up, because Comcast is running long haul lines from, I think, Canada to Jasper, so they're bypassing the city for now, and they have to pay, I think, per footage, right, for the, the line or something. But we don't have anything in place to have, like permitting or fees or any way to, because they have like a right-of-way, they added this to their right-of-way agreement with the state and updated it. But they're not paying right-of-way fees because they don't provide service in town, but we still need to be able to have. So DMA came up with all this, sent it out, and just said, like, maybe something to do. And then they're behind that package, it's the one, right-of-way permit. We actually have something that, like, you go check it, because they had actually called to me, I think some of the lines will hook it to the road, because they were bit in stone and, or a construction company, and they don't do it right-of-way, and the guys went out and looked, but they basically couldn't put it where they originally needed to put it, because it's all wrong. So just, kind of, as a way to track it and keep up with it, and permit it and everything else.
I'm not trying to find out if they're doing it as built, I think they're. As built. Means they had a plan, but then that they had to alter.
Okay, yeah, they've sent me the revised stuff, so, not just the terminology.
Using when they finished them. Like I said, it's supposed to be here four feet, they had to do it at five feet, and actually a draw and a shove. As built.
So we wanna add this back to the equation?
Yeah, you can read your second reading.
Okay.
Have you changed anything, Dan, sir, just send it to me, you know?
Okay, I just, I literally just went to all the highlighted things for interview sitting here, and took off the highlights that Nelson.
I don't mind doing work, good.
Nelson, just okay, so.
Good.
That makes like the same thing.
Okay. Next up is executive session, can I get a motion to move to executive session?
Who got the motion?
Okay, can I be seconded, please?
Second.